Good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council. We're going to start out with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And tonight for our invocation, we have Pastor Jason Keem from Calvary Chapel. If you could give that for us. Thank you. Could all stand, please?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council, city leaders, thank you. It's an awesome privilege to be here and do for you in person what we're happy to do for you in other settings all the time. So this isn't the only time that we pray for you guys. So I would ask for you and everybody to join me now. Father in heaven, we thank you for tonight and we thank you for the opportunity that we have been blessed with to gather and discuss, think about, consider this great city. You have blessed us, Lord, uniquely, to live in this great little town, and we're thankful. God, we're glad for the city leaders that you have placed in these positions to steward over this city, its resources, and the people who make up the community. God, we ask that you would give wisdom to these leaders. We pray, Lord, that you would give them a sense of cooperation always and unity. God, that you would unite them together among those things that are best for the people of this city. Lord, we pray that you would protect this meeting and that you would cause it to be peaceful and civil, and that we would treat one another always with respect. Lord, we're thankful for your love for us. We say this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. We appreciate your petitioning on our behalf, both in public and private. First, have our public announcements. And before I call up Mr. Turner, I do have one before I forget. And I was asked to announce that the week of May 5th through 11th is Public Service Recognition Week. And we encourage our citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of our government employees at all levels, at the local and the state and the federal level. And I have a proclamation, but I'm not going to read that to you. And then we do have Mr. Ray Turner. I can find my sheet here. Is Mr. Turner here?
He was, but I'm sure he'll be back just a little bit.
Okay.
Oh, there he is. There he is. Ray, you're up.
Here I am.
Yay!
He's here on behalf of the Boulder City Arts, History and Arts Foundation.
Good evening. I'm sorry I'm late. It's Ray Turner, and I just wanted to make an announcement and remind everybody that this weekend, we're having our first-ever historic murder mystery play, and it's taking place up at the water filtration plant. And you have three days left to get your tickets if you haven't already got them. It's going to be a lot of fun, and I hope you all will come and join us and help support us with regard to historic preservation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And we do have several high school seniors, it looks like, mostly seniors, with us tonight, gearing up for their mock city council. Can you all stand up so we can recognize you? You're on TV, so get used to it. You're going to be in the spotlight. Future leaders. All right. I don't think I saw any fourth graders, but if there are any, could you raise your hands? Oh, we have one. All right. Can you stand up? Oh, yeah, a big fourth grader. Very good. I'll join you in that. Okay. All right, we're on to approval of our regular agenda. Madam City Clerk. Oh, yes, public comment first. So we have a public comment devoted to agenda items only. And are there any wishing to speak in initial public comment? So I'm guessing we have several on item number... You can probably tell me what it is.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, the Utilities Commission. So you can either speak now on that item, or I'll give you the opportunity during our discussion in number fourteen. You don't get to do it twice, but you can pick either or. All right. Come on up. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Linda Barnett. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item 14. Based on what has been published by the city, I, and I'm sure Boulder City businesses and residents, especially those on fixed incomes, support Agenda Item Number 14, which will repeal the present annual utility rate increase. It would be better that a new rate study be conducted to assess and reflect true costs for our utilities before any rate increase be considered. Until that is done, the upcoming rate increase is not justified. As we're all aware, Boulder City is a not-for-profit municipality. We should continue to adhere to that philosophy. It's hoped tonight that council will unanimously support this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Glenn.
My name is Glenn Fagan. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick thing on item 14. I'm not sure if we're due to rate increase or not every year. Just for what it's worth, to let people know, if you look at your energy bill, our energy bill, before one drop of water, before one volt of electricity runs in our house, it costs eighty-six dollars and seventy cents a month, just to be hooked up. Not one drop of water, not one volt of electricity coming in. A thousand forty dollars a year just to be hooked up. And that's not even having trash cans, not even putting trash cans out in the street. So think about it. And if you look at that, an average house, if that's what everybody pays, we're sixty-five-hundred households roughly, give or take, and at that rate, before anybody, anybody in town uses a drop of water or pulls any electricity, the utilities department, stuff like that, pull in over six million, seven hundred thousand dollars before any electricity or any water flows to a pipe or a wire. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
I too would like to speak on 14, and I do feel at this time being that we have a new rates study that's already in the budget for two-hundred thousand to do this study, which I assume will happen July or August. I too think we should cancel that 2.5 percent increase. The budget, using the budget that was presented a month or so ago, the electric budgeted revenue over the expenses is going to be two million, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. The water is the same, the budget or the revenue over expenses is going to be one million, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ten dollars. You can tell I'm not used to big numbers like that. And the wastewater is a hundred and forty-three dollars, so if the, you know, sewer fees, wastewater fees stay the same, I could understand that because that's a small difference. But both the electric and potable water, that's a considerable over revenue over expenses, and I agree that we should cancel it until after we get that rate study and get a chance to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
I'm not talking.
Scott's not talking. You guys can arm wrestle in the back. Come on up.
Ainsworth Hunt. I'm here to speak on item 14 as well. For a nonprofit to have revenues in excess of expenses, as extreme as what we already have, and to have an extremely regressive tax base where our fixed fees for those utilities are very high, especially relative to other areas in southern Nevada, the idea of having a built-in rate increase year after year is ridiculous. It's patently outrageous. I'm not as eloquent as the previous speakers, but I can't stay for the whole meeting. I'll be back.
Thank you. Please.
I'm Claudia Bridges. And I'm, in order to avoid being redundant with what everybody has said so far, I want to agree that we should repeal the automatic increases until the completion of a rate study, until the meeting of the Citizen Advisory Committee. Because the alternative is we continue adding those year after year until there's a determination, or we can choose not to add them until there's a determination. And from people I've talked who are very concerned that they walk into their house and their bill is automatically eighty-six dollars before a drop of water and before they turn on the lights, that I think it's imperative that we look at it this way, that we stop it now until it's determined it's necessary, as opposed to continue on and then evaluate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Like others who have spoken before me, I support the Agenda Number 14, which will repeal the present annual utility increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? High school students? Fourth graders? Okay. We'll close our initial public comment period. And now we'll move to approval of the regular agenda. Madam City Clerk.
No changes. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
No changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No changes.
And Council?
I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Next is approval of our consent agenda. Madam City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we're asking to remove items, item numbers three and four, please.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
No further changes.
Mr. City Attorney?
No further changes.
Council?
Move to approve with changes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. So we are on to item number nine on our regular agenda, introduction of Bill Number 1848 and ordinance, approving an amendment to Agreement Number 18-1768 between the city and Clark County Regional Flood Control District. Have somebody introduce that.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce Bill Number 1848 and waive the reading except for title.
Bill Number 1848, an ordinance of the city of Boulder City, approving Amendment Number 18-1768A to Agreement Number 181768 between the city of Boulder City and the Clark County Regional Flood Control District to include the existing weather collection equipment site within the communication site lease on Red Mountain. Bill 1848 will be considered at the May 14th regular city council meeting.
Thank you. Next is item number 10, a presentation by Southern Nevada Water Authority General Manager John Ensminger. He's going to talk to us about our water supply for the next 50 years. And if you didn't catch it, he gave a great presentation at our senior center several months ago, last year, at one of our town hall meetings. It was excellent.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. Please feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have questions as I go through the presentation. So not a lot of people, you know, probably know exactly what the Southern Nevada Water Authority is. Nobody gets a water bill from the Water Authority. What we are is the regional wholesale agency. So we pump the water out of Lake Mead, we clean it, and then we sell it to North Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Valley Water District, City of Henderson, and Boulder City. We're responsible for coordinating the region's conservation efforts. We're not a regulatory body, but what we do is try to get everybody to agree on what the rules for conservation should be, and then have those codified, you know, through city codes and the county's code. Water supply planning, we're charged by state law with planning for the region's future water supply needs. And to do that, we do a 50-year resource plan every single year so that we always have a five-decade outlook on what the region's supplies look like. Water quality, we operate two world-class water treatment facilities out at Lake Mead to ensure the quality of our water. Infrastructure, we build a lot of really big, expensive things that nobody ever gets to see. Since 1995, we've built about three and a half billion dollars' worth of new infrastructure and then buried it. And stewardship, we take care of the Las Vegas Wash, the Warner Springs Natural Area, the Las Vegas Springs Preserve, so we're very focused on our natural environment. So seven out of every 10 people that live in the state of Nevada rely upon the services we provide every single day. And Las Vegas doesn't have a great reputation for water use, but that doesn't match up with the facts. If you take a look at this slide, you'll see that out of all the water available in the state of Nevada, Clark County uses less than 5 percent. And in return for that, we generate 76 percent of the state's economic output and have 73 percent of the state's population. However, we're highly reliant upon one source of water. You know, I don't need to tell you guys in Boulder City, with Lake Mead right in your backyard, but obviously that lake has been going down fairly precipitously since the turn of the century. It's down about 140 feet since the year 2000. And even though we're having a tremendous winter in the Rocky Mountains, we can expect the lake level to continue to go down. Even with that good year, we're essentially going to stay flat this year, and if we got another normal year next year, we go down about another four feet. If we get a bad year in the Rockies, those elevations could go down quite a bit quicker than that. And this is really what we're focused on and what we're concerned with. The Bureau of Reclamation estimates that there's a 20 percent chance that Lake Mead could get to elevation 1020 by the year 2025. At that elevation, there's only 17 percent of the capacity left in the lake. Hoover Dam essentially stops generating electrical power, and you're about 20 feet away from the federal government being unable to deliver water downstream to Arizona, California, and the state or in the country of Mexico. So we need to operate to prevent those sorts of critical reservoir elevations. So what are we doing to address it? First, resource planning. We're working with our neighbors to try to get more water into the lake. Water banking, we've been diligently banking water around the region for the last almost 20 years now, again, building new infrastructure, and always, always focusing on the region's conservation efforts. So starting with the first of those, we have now finalized what's known as the drought contingency plan. The seven states that share the Colorado River forwarded that plan to Congress and to the Secretary of Interior on March 18th. There were hearings in both the House and the Senate, and I'm happy to report that the President signed the enabling legislation just last week, so that's now a done deal. And it's critical. If you look at this chart, without that plan, by 2026, there's about a 50 percent chance you could get down to elevation 1020. With the plan in place, you drop that risk to about 5 percent. So all seven states have now come together and said, this is how all of us are going to share the pain, how all of us are going to leave more water in Lakes Mead and Lake Powell to, in order to protect the 40 million Americans that rely upon this river system from these drought conditions. So what does shortage mean for southern Nevada? This chart shows the lake elevations and then the amount of water that our basic apportionment is reduced. So above 1090, we have full legal entitlement to our 300,000 acre feet of water. For each step down, you see our, the amount of water that we can pull out of the lake going down commensurately. But what this shows is our consumptive use last year was 244, and the biggest cut we're scheduled to take under federal law, even with that new plan in place, is down to 270. So even with the full cuts implemented, our community still has quite a bit of extra water that we can continue to bank around the region. And this is what our bank accounts look like. Again, last year's use was 244. If you add up all the water that we've banked in Lake Mead, that we've injected into the ground here in the Las Vegas Valley, water we've stored with our partners in Arizona and California, we have over 1.8 million acre feet of water in banked reserves. So that translates to about eight years of our current demands, which puts us in an enviable position compared to our neighbors. Nobody else has these kinds of banked reserves. Infrastructure, we completed two-and-a-half-mile tunnel underneath Lake Mead. That's been fully operational since 2015. That gives us access to the coldest, deepest part of the lake. And critically, if you look at this, 10, if we were ever unfortunate enough for the lake to continue to drop and get down to elevation 895, that's the elevation at which the Bureau of Reclamation cannot release water through Hoover Dam. So you're essentially guaranteed to have now over 20 feet of water over our lowest intake. We're also under construction of a new low-lake-level pumping station. That's a $650 million facility that will match up with the third intake and guarantee us the ability to pull water out of the lake even in, in a worst-case hydrologic condition. Return flows, and something we need to talk about, you know, specifically to Boulder City, but for the Las Vegas Valley, all of our water users in the Las Vegas Valley, if it hits a drain, we clean it, we put it back in the lake, we can take out the exact same amount of water. The only way we lose water from our system in the Las Vegas Valley is through outdoor irrigation and evaporative cooling. It's not the case in Boulder City. Most of your effluent goes to evaporation ponds, but our staff has begun working with your staff, and we think there's a couple of realistic solutions in terms of being able to get your treated effluent either into the City of Henderson system or to get it directly into Lake Mead or the lower Colorado River below Hoover Dam. Conservation, we've paid a lot of money to a lot of people to take out turf, and we're still going. We've now paid in excess of $220 million to have people remove turf. That's equivalent to an 18-inch piece of sod laid 96 percent of the way around the circumference of the globe. And the results have been pretty phenomenal. While our population has increased by 46 percent, our per capita water usage is down 38 percent, and our consumptive use of Colorado River water is down 25 percent. So we've done well in conservation, but we need to keep going. As you can see, over the last particularly five, six, seven years, our conservation achievements have leveled off. So we've redoubled some of our efforts to get over sort of the drought fatigue. We, our community, needs to keep making conservation gains. And the number-one way we can do that is to get rid of non-functional turf. And when I talk about non-functional turf, my definition of that is if the only person who's walking on it or the people that are mowing it, that's not a luxury our community can afford anymore. It's particularly egregious within the Las Vegas Valley. I'm not singling Boulder City out. We got traffic circles and medians and all sorts of places in the Las Vegas Valley where grass shouldn't be, and that's really what we're focusing in on. So just another example here, we think within the Las Vegas Valley, there's about 5,000 acres of turf that nobody walks on it except for the people that mow it. So we're really going after that. So we've increased the ceiling on our rebate program to $500,000 per project. It's $3 per square foot. So if there are any projects here in Boulder City that you guys are interested in participating with, we'd be happy to work with you on those. We particularly are looking at parks, a lot of the new parks, they still have plenty of functional turf for our kids to play on, but they don't go wall-to-wall turf like a lot of the older parks did in the valley. We're coming right up to the curb, and again, nobody's really using that turf to play on. So another thing we'll be working on, I mentioned sort of the coordinating role that the Water Authority plays. We have a group of staff that's meeting with all of the municipal and county jurisdictions to try to come up with uniform changes to city and county codes. So that's an effort that will be ongoing in the year ahead. So overall, our water use is still down while our population has continued to increase, so that's a very good news. And if we look out over that 50-year planning horizon, what this chart shows is if we had a shortage condition every single year on the river, those bank supplies kick in about 2060, but we have plenty of water for the next 50 years as long as we don't see a steeper decline in the lake levels and as long as our population grows at the projected rates from the state demographer. If we saw a steeper decline, it had to take even bigger cuts than what's anticipated in the recent deal between the seven states. And if our population grew at about twice as fast as it's been growing over the last five years, then we could see a situation where we would need new resources by the early 2040s. But if we can make additional conservation gains, this is just showing eight gallons per person per day less by 2035, and nine gallons per person per day less by 2055. And you, again, even under those sort of worst-case conditions, push out the need for new resources into the 2050s. So overall, our water portfolio is in very strong shape, our infrastructure is in great shape, and we're fortunate to live in probably the most water-secure community in the southwest United States. So with that, I will wrap up and see if there's any questions.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate that. Great presentation and how you look into the future for us. That's great. 50 years out, and that's not easy to do, but, okay, council questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to comment that Mr. Ensminger played a pivotal role in this drought contingency plan with these seven states coming together. There are a lot of moving parts, and he's a great leader in the water world, so it's really been a pleasure for me to serve on that board and to work with him.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Thank you. We had a presentation a few months ago from Los Angeles Water and Power regarding a pump storage program that they're looking at. Do you see any impact or any potential similar use by SNWA?
Yeah, I think, and it may well be able to be worked out, but our primary concern with that project, as we understand it, is a water quality, particularly temperature, issue. So they would be pumping that water from Lake Mojave, you know, in front of Laughlin, which is obviously a much shallower lake than Lake Mead, has some, you know, organic constituents that we don't see in Lake Mead, and the temperature of the water is quite a bit higher. So if you're introducing a significantly, a significant amount of water that's higher in temperature and has a lot of organic compounds in it, the chances that we'll see a number of new algal blooms and things like that in Lake Mead is pretty significant. So that's one thing we would need to work out with LADWP in order to then be able to mitigate that sort of impact. But, you know, the nuts and bolts of the project... But, you know, the nuts and bolts of the project, we, we think it makes sense with California's, you know, renewable portfolio standard, you know, where it is, they're in a situation where a lot of times they're literally paying people to take solar power off of their hands. They, they need a really big battery, and, and that's what that pump storage project into Lake Mead would do. So if we can work out the, the water quality aspects of it, it's something that we would support.
Thank you. And last question, with the changes we've seen over the past 20 years now, drought conditions that had not been experienced in the half-century before that, what sort of projections are there? I mean, are we just in a dry spell, or is this a reality that's going to get more real for us?
Well, unfortunately, I think it's the latter, and I'll unpack that a, a little bit. The, the first thing to understand is we, we have a pretty good idea of what this river system has looked like for the last 1,400 years through what's known as paleohydrology, reconstructed tree ring records. We can go back and have a good idea of what this river system has looked like for a long time into the past. And when you look at that 1,400-year record, it shows that the 20th century was one of the three wettest centuries out of the last 1,400 years. So all of our laws, all of our institutions, everything that was negotiated from 1922 to, you know, 2000 is flawed. It's, it's based upon an assumption of more water than is likely to occur in the 21st century. If you then add on to that, the, what we view as the realities of climate change and the reality, the, that higher temperatures are going to lead to even further reduced snowpack in the Rocky Mountains, you're, you're dealing with a situation where all 40 million Americans and two states in Mexico are going to need to figure out a way to use less water. And that's why even though we don't drive the river, Nevada has a legal entitlement to 1.8% of all the water in the Colorado River. But through our conservation plans, we need to do our part, but the other six states and, and Mexico are, are going to have to figure out a way to use less water as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Others? Mr. Haray, any questions, comments?
No, Captain.
All right, well, Mr. Ernst Minger, thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Councilwoman Levitt serves on the Water Authority Board and does a great job for us there, and Water Authority is a wonderful partner with us, helping us find solutions to our water needs. Okay, next we have item number 11, a presentation by Dr. Carla Loria, Regional Superintendent, and Ms. Jill Lynn Pendleton School Associate Superintendent, giving us an update on our schools.
Good evening.
Looks like we've got a principal with us, too.
Yes.
I made it.
The whole team. Good evening, Mayor Woodbury, council members, city members. Thank you for having us here. My name is Dr. Carla Loria, one of three region superintendents for District Clark County, and I just want to thank you for having us. I am, I have been in education 30 years. I moved to Nevada three weeks ago, three and a half weeks ago, actually. I was coming from Colorado. I have been a region superintendent for eight years in San Diego Unified and in Houston, Texas, so I've accustomed to working in large districts. So great advantages, very excited on being here. I'm going to be sharing with you a little bit about the strategic plan for our district. I don't know how to turn on the PowerPoint. So we do have a new structure, and the district has been divided in three regions. I do work with two school associate superintendents, one of them, actually, most of you know very well. So I'm going to allow her later on to introduce herself and tell us a little bit about the schools that are here in Boulder City. So this is the vision of the, in the strategic plan, our vision in Clark County schools, just to make sure that all students will make adequate progress and they will become great members of a global society. Focus 2024 has 15 goals in these four major categories. I'm not going to go in detail, but in a nutshell, all the categories, all the goals are going to be focusing on ensuring that we do have student success as a number-one target. So we're going to try to go from a lot of different initiatives to having a laser-like focus on student success. We will be focusing in working on our curriculum, the Nevada Academic Standards Curriculum, the assessment and ensuring that instruction is delivered in a high capacity. We will be working with principals and working with increasing the capacity of our teachers to make sure that students are successful. And for this, actually, we have changed a little bit the way that we work with principals, and you will probably hear from them as we move into next year. We are creating a climate and a culture where actually principals and every adult will be part of a learning organization. When we think about schools, we think that the only ones who learn are the students, but it's not quite the only ones who are learning. We as adults will be learning on how to better structure and support our students. We will become a learning organization in which professional learning is going to be our focus. Adults talking about how to make schools a better place for our students. We do have, this is who we are at large, Team Region Three. We have 118 schools and a total of 115,365 students. And there is a breakdown of our, of all of our schools, and Jill will actually be talking and sharing a little bit of the schools here in Boulder City.
Well, good evening, Mayor Woodbury, members of City Council. My name is Jill Pendleton, School Associate Superintendent, and I'm humbled and proud to say that I will be working with the principals in Boulder City. So for all of your schools, your elementary school, your middle, your elementary schools, your middle school and your high school, and I say that I'm humbled and proud because I am a proud graduate of Boulder City High School. I won't say what class, but for the class of 2019, I want to extend my congratulations to all of you that are here with us tonight, and I want to let you know that the last time I stood on your football field was when I received my high school diploma. So it will be an honor for me to be there with you on your graduation day, which is May 23rd, at 6:00 p.m. Yes?
What time?
7:00 p.m. So congratulations to the class of 2019. I'm so proud to be a, a part of, of this amazing city. I want you to know that growing up here, I understand Boulder City, I understand the unique needs of this community, but as an educator for 23 years, I also understand the unique needs of the, of the schools here in Boulder City. And I want you to know that I'm coming back to Boulder City from that context of having worked in Las Vegas and worked with, within our large schools to coming back to Boulder City and really understanding, understanding the unique challenges primarily that your schools are facing in terms of smaller numbers of students, which can sometimes limit access and equity. So it will be my challenge and my job to help support that for all of our students, K-12, pre-K-12 here in Boulder City. I have worked with your principal extensively, I know her very well, and I know some of the challenges she also faces, especially as students grow older and need access to those more advanced rigorous courses. And it will be my opportunity and my privilege to work with her as we move forward with our schools. So just highlighting the schools here in Boulder City, I know that schools are star-rated. Schools in Boulder City typically outperform schools across our district, and as you can see from your star ratings, your schools are four and five-star schools. Andrew Mitchell is not star-rated due to the fact that they don't test in those grades, and Martha King is a four-star school. Garrett earned 92.56 points out of 100 on the school performance framework, but you only see three of those stars are gold. They would have been a five-star school, 100, it's on a 100-point scale, so they were almost a perfect score, but there were a couple of subgroups that didn't make the target. So we'll be working with Garrett to make sure that every single student and every single student group is achieving at the levels that we are expecting. And then, of course, Boulder City High School as a four-star school. So we do have one of our principals with us here tonight, and he's going to provide you a quick update from Andrew Mitchell, Mr. Day.
Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, mayor and council members, other city leaders. We, thanks for having us. We, you know, I thought of, obviously, our, my supervisors here gave a pretty good overview of what we're trying to accomplish as a school district, and so I thought I'd share what's unique to Andrew J. Mitchell. And, you know, a lot of you have had kids and grandkids come through the school, and especially since I've been there, it's my ninth year at Mitchell, so I know a lot of you and know a lot of your kids. So I know you're already familiar with me a little bit. However, some things you'll want to know about us that I think are unique, and I talk about this all the time because it's, it's just something that, that we're very proud of at Mitchell, but many of you know when I started at Mitchell several years ago, I really felt a need to develop the whole child. And, and it's funny now because in the district, we're really talking about, district-wide about a social-emotional learning component and how important that is. And I just feel like, wow, we kind of got ahead of the game on this, because as you know, we, we, we implement a, I like to call it more of a, a process rather than a program because you never stop growing in this area, but, you know, something I came across, which at the time was virtually unheard of, called Leader in Me, where we, and the idea is that we're going to develop every child into a leader. It's our school mission statement, that we'll develop every child into a successful leader. And so, as many of you know, we teach our kids seven habits of highly effective people that Stephen Covey came out with decades ago. It is still one of the most influential books of all time, and, and our kids have adopted these habits and they're leaders. And just recently, you, you might know in 2015, we were recognized by the Leader in Me as a lighthouse school. At the time, we were the first lighthouse school in Nevada, and this past fall, we just recertified as a lighthouse school because they don't want you to get lazy and hit your milestone and think you're done. So we recertified again this past fall, and I remember thinking, well, by the time we recertified, there will probably be, you know, a few more lighthouse schools, but we're still the only one in the state of Nevada. So, and there's probably 40 to 50 Leader in Me schools in Nevada, but we're still the only lighthouse school. And I, and obviously, I hope to see more, and because we're mentoring a lot of those schools, but I, I, I mention it just because, you know, it's worth noting that that's, you know, they don't just hand that out to you because they like you or because, you know, you sing a cool song about being proactive or something. It's, you know, it's, it's something that's hard-earned, and, you know, we've earned that recognition because our, our kids are leaders. Many of you have been to the school, they, you know, we have kindergarten children who can tell you what their goals are, who have their own leadership notebooks where they track their academic goals and they track their personal goals, and they can tell you how far away they are from reaching their reading goal, whether it's, and it could be in their unique goals, you know, it could be, well, and, and if anyone ever follows me around Mitchell every day without fail, you will hear this, "Mr. Day, did you know I only have 20 more minutes of reading this week, and if I get it, I'm going to have met my second reading goal this school year? Or if I get 50 more points on reading counts and I've only got five left, I'm going to reach my next reading goal." And so, you know, it's pretty cool to hear four and five-year-old kids talk about things like that, knowing their own goals. You know, most of us aren't great at that. We, you know, we set a goal on New Year's Day, and we kind of, you know, forget about it by January 9th, and these kids keep track of their goal throughout the year, and they can, they can open up their leadership notebook and tell you how they're progressing toward any of their goals all the time. So, so we're proud of it. We do have a leadership day, by the way. We, we do this pretty regularly. We've had hundreds of visitors from the western United States over the last several years. But we like to have a leadership day where the kids can demonstrate leadership skills, where they can take adults on a tour of the school, they can show off their leadership notebooks. And, and this year's leadership day, we're really targeting our incoming kindergarten families, but of course, as city leaders, you're invited. So it is a week from Thursday, May 2nd, I believe is the date, May 2nd is the date on that, is from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So if any of you are welcome to come by and have a six-year-old take you on the, maybe Councilman Schuman's kids, I don't know, they're usually right in the mix, they're usually right there. So, and take you on a tour of the school, show you their goals, talk to you about the great things we're doing at Mitchell. Otherwise, one other thing that may be of note to you, I, I can tell you it's showing up in the academics, by the way, are, as is mentioned, we do very well in Boulder City. We're real proud of these, these young kids. They're, you know, our recent, even though we don't take high-stakes tests at the K-32 level, we do have a test that our kids take three times a year that I always say is our high-stakes test because it's the closest thing we have to, and our, you know, our, our second grade just came in under 90% this last winter. Our first grade came in over 90%. So, yeah, we're real proud of that because when you figure, that's every kid. I mean, that's every kid with a learning disability and every other challenge they might have. You know, we're doing okay, I'd like to get to 100, and I actually think we can do it. So, anyway, I, I do want to apologize to the gentleman on, who gave the presentation on the water conservation. So we have Field Day this Friday, it's going to be 95 degrees, and we're not going to be contributing much to water conservation on Friday, I can tell you that, and I'm in charge of the hose. But, but otherwise, we'll try to help out on, it's only once a year, it's only once a year. So I, I just, the last thing I would just say is, and I've mentioned this before, I just want to thank all of you. You know, I've had, as I mentioned, I've had a lot of your kids, and since I've been here, it has been nothing but complete and total support, especially from some of you who are leaders, and you're busy, and you come, Councilman Schuman was at Field Day last year. So, and, and many, you know, Mayor Woodbury's been there over the years when his kids have been in the school, and, you know, so many of you, City Attorney Moore, so, and it's been nothing but support since I've been there, and I mean that. I, I thank you from the bottom of my heart for that because it's, you know, when you have a partnership with your community and you have families and leaders coming, getting behind you, it just makes a big difference, I appreciate it. Thanks for everything you guys are doing for us as a school.
Thank you. I don't know if you have any questions for any of us that we may be able to answer.
Thank you. That's, you're amazing. We all know that Mitchell is a 10-star school. And so just for, for kicks, how many of you out there actually attended Andrew J. Mitchell Elementary School? Quite a few. How many of you had Principal Day as your principal? Anybody?
So my first second-grade group is in 10th grade this year, so probably none of these seniors yet, but it's coming.
Coming, getting close.
Sure, some siblings. Yeah, some of the siblings in the school right now, actually.
I actually attended that school, too, a long time ago.
Is Mr. Day your principal?
He wasn't. That was, that was sixth grade back then.
So I have a 10th grader that I think
Yes.
you probably had. And I have a first grader and a second grader in the school now, and you, you do more than okay and more than great with these kids at that school. This Leader in Me program is so amazing, the stuff that those kids bring home and teach us as parents, and their older brothers and sisters, it's been amazing. So we really appreciate you, Mr. Day, you've done a great job there.
We do appreciate our administrators. I'm preaching to the choir when we say it starts here with the administrator. So our goal is to work with them, support them, and coach them, learn with them as we make schools a better place for our students. So thank you for having us.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight, we really appreciate it. Thank you, principal. All right, item number 12 is presentation of the Boulder City Historic Preservation Award for 2019. And announcement of May 11th as Boulder City's Historic Preservation Day. So, am I introduced in that one?
Good evening, mayor. We have the Historic Preservation Committee Chairman Alan Goya here to present those items.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, staff, and, and Warren, I, I know you're there, I see your chair. Anyway, you're there, thank you, good. We miss him on Boulder on Mondays. Anyway, Boulder City Historic Preservation Award for 2019. The Boulder City Historic Preservation Committee has determined that the Boulder City Historic Preservation Award for 2019 is hereby granted to the historic water filtration and purification plant at 300 Railroad Avenue. Located within Boulder City Historic District as listed on the National Register of Historic Places, the water plant was selected for this award because the building was one of the first permanent structures built by the Bureau of Reclamation in 1932. It provided clean drinking water to thousands of employees constructing Hoover Dam and their families. The structure is a visual landmark in Boulder City and is an excellent example of industrial architecture with elements of Italian Renaissance revival style. The committee especially would like to recognize the Boulder City History and Arts Foundation, Scott Donnelly, President of Copper Roofing and Solar, and the community at large for their awareness, appreciation, and support for the preservation of the historic water treatment plant. Awarded this 23rd day of April 2019 by the City of Boulder City, Nevada. Awarded this 23rd day of April 2019 by the City of Boulder City, Nevada. Anyway, congratulations. Where, you know, there were seven nominations for this award, and it was a really hard choice. And we hope that this award, you know, actually, you know, we hope, we hope that the message is that the historic preservation of the water treatment plant isn't done. It's a great step. It really got the community engaged, and as a symbol of historic preservation, I hope that we move forward and do more for the preservation of that structure. Now, that culminates, next month is Historic Preservation Month, and which is going to be Historic Preservation Day on May 11th.
Mr. Goya, can I interrupt you just a moment? I think we have a representative here from the Boulder City History and Arts Foundation, as well as Mr. Donnelly from Copper Roofing.
I don't have the plaque.
I've got it up here, so we can do that now if you want, or you want to announce that, and then we'll invite everybody up. We can do it now, come on up.
Hi, I'm Sharon Resnikoff, and I'm honored that I was asked to be here tonight to represent the Boulder City History and Arts Foundation in accepting this award, along with Scott Donnelly, on behalf of the history, I'm sorry, the historic water filtration plant. The water filtration plant gave life to Boulder City in 1932. The use of the facility for half a century provided life-giving water to our community. The architecture and design of this magnificent building is awe-inspiring to all who see and experience it. We are so fortunate that the architects designed such an outstanding structure in our town. We must protect and preserve this iconic building. The History and Arts Foundation follows in the footsteps of the Arts Council, the Friends of the Arts, and the Desert Sculptors. Each has done so much to enhance our community over the years. Through the continuous outreach of the History and Arts Foundation and some very fortunate contacts, a local resident, Mr. Scott Donnelly generously donated the replacement of the roof on the filtration plant. This is a wonderful start towards preserving this building and the park where it is located. The History and Arts Foundation is deeply appreciative of the generosity of Scott Donnelly and his company, Copper Roofing and Solar, for restoring the disintegrated roof on the plant. It is the crucial first step in preserving this asset for the community. Through his outstanding work and efforts, Mr. Donnelly and his company not only ensured that the building would be protected, but that the artifacts from the building would be preserved for uses such as the very popular historic roof tile art project and other uses to further promote our history. We know we have a generous community that is exemplified by Mr. Donnelly. We know we can make preservation our history a main tenet in the success of Boulder City. The Boulder City History and Arts Foundation thanks to the city's Historic Preservation Committee for recognizing our group's efforts to highlight the need for historic preservation. Lastly, we would like to thank the many generous citizens of Boulder City who have helped us by volunteering their time, talents, and their continued support of historic preservation. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If you want to come on up, we'll present, present this award, and then take a few photos. Thank you, Mr. Donnelly.
So I won't read this, but this says pretty much the same thing that Alan already talked about, that this plaque, City of Boulder City Historic Preservation Award 2019.
Perfect. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is the public worth installing? Yeah, it's fully worth installing. Thank you. That was fun. Thank you, thank you, Scott. Anyway, so on, on May 11th, it's Historic Preservation Day, and we're trying to make this thing even bigger than, better than last year. So it's kind of a, it's growing up. So, we have a kind of a citywide open house we've got going. It's going to start at the LEDWP building. It's going to be sponsored by, that orientation is sponsored by LEDWP and the museum. But then we're going to have an open house that's going to include the Los Angeles Water and Power Building from two, I mean, from 10 to 2, that we open houses at the Los Angeles Water and Power Building, in front of the Browder Building, which has new owners and new life. And the Daughters of the American Revolution are going to be making a presentation on Ida Browder, in a little street theater there. And then at the water filtration plant, the B.C. Arts and Historic Foundation is again sponsoring tours and lectures of the historic water filtration plant with Ray White, historian Ray White will be giving his presentation. Oh, also, there'll be a, the historic art contest featuring the historic Browder Building as the subject, sponsored by the B.C. Art Guild and B.C. History and Arts Foundation. And you can vote on your winner, and they'll be displayed at the LEDWP building. The Bureau of Reclamation, which is kind of a cool thing, that's going to be, they're going to have an open house. And that's a, if you haven't been in their new remodeled building, it's really quite something. It's a secure building, so you don't always get a chance to see it, but it'll be an open house between 10 and 2 on that day. The Railroad Museum will be participating, they're going to be showing some locomotives that were used during the construction of the dam. And we're also going to open up the Bullock's Field Hangar, and open up the hangar. If you've never been at the Bullock's Field Hangar, now's your chance to check it out. Then, we're going to, in the afternoon, 2 to 2:30, at the Boulder City High School, we're going to have an open house at the high school. And, Mayor, I still, I'm going to count on you to help me find volunteers to show the pictures of the people that were, the historic pictures of the, of the aluminists there at the, at the high school. But we will be doing stories of Boulder City, and it's going to be emceed by historian and, and alumnus from B.C. High School, Dennis McBride. And it will feature stories from Boulder City, from, of a great group of residents with great stories. And then to culminate this thing, we are going to have a parade up California Boulevard with the high school marching band, and we're going to open up the Dilinger Block Party, kind of ending at the, the, the American Legion, a little, little water break up there. We just added that to the schedule, and so we're going to open up the Dilinger Block Party and talk about Gordon Kaufman and the, and the history of Art at the Dam. So, anyway, that's art, that's Historic Preservation Day in Boulder City, and we hope that you'll all be there, because it ought to be a fun day. Thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like a packed day, some, little something for everybody. And again, we want to thank those of you that have worked on the water filtration plant, especially again, Mr. Donnelly, for his generosity. We know that projects like that aren't successful unless we have lots of volunteer hours and lots of people working behind the scenes who don't get much thanks in public usually, so congratulations to you. Southern Nevada. We have Mr. Roger Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Roger Hall, your Parks and Recreation Director. The Southern Nevada chapter of the International Code Council is giving the city $2,500 for a, a program that we started at the swimming pool to give toddlers four years of age and younger swimming lessons. And it's been a very successful program. Over 600 kids have participated over the years in the program, and with some very good results, so we are very happy. Is Krista here with the?
Hi, yeah.
Ah.
Hi. Good. Hi, good evening. My name is Krista Bilbree, and I am here on behalf of the Southern Nevada chapter of the International Code Council. This is my first year being involved with this swim program, but the council has been involved for the past 11 years, and we have been fortunate to be able to have awarded over $175,000 to the local jurisdictions to help prevent childhood drowning, because as a code council, they put together codes to promote life safety. So even one, you know, childhood drowning is one too many, and we're happy to be partnered up with you, and we look forward to a successful summer.
Thank you very much. Want to come up?
Yeah.
Got the big check there, we like that. That money will be put to really good use, and we have great programs in our Parks and Rec Department that focus on teaching our kids how to swim and keeping them safe, and lots of other classes that go along with that. And I know that many are beneficiaries of what they learn there. Okay, we, do we need to, I guess, adopt this resolution, correct? Resolution 6925, accepting the $2,500 grant from the International Code Council. I'll go ahead and move to accept that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously with one big loud aye. Thank you. We're, next item is item number 14, matters pertaining to our electric, water, and sewer rates, as requested by Councilmember McManus. And will you be introducing that?
Well, again, the purpose of this, in looking at the revenues that we've been receiving from our utility accounts, for the last two years, we've appeared to be taking in revenues in excess of our expenses. We've had rate increases being enacted the last couple of years. The way that those were done puts a 2.5% automatic increase each year going forward onto each of the accounts. The electric, water, and wastewater accounts receive that automatic increase. My concern is that that automatic increase is being imposed without reviewing what the revenues and expenses are each year, and determining if that increase is necessary or not. I had included in the packet several points that I feel are important to this. There is one question about it, as we look at the rate structure, the rate increase structure that was imposed by the council back in 2016. I just want to clarify that the rate increase for the electric fund, taking it up to .0950, is due next year, not July of this year. So we would not only be looking at a 2.5% increase in the water and wastewater starting this July, but then next year, we would also have a rate increase, plus the automatic 2.5% would be starting in July of 2020. Is that correct? Okay. Again, the way it's expressed there, it's difficult to tell which fiscal year things are happening, but we do have these automatic rate increases set for the water and wastewater funds this year, and then on the electric fund, in addition to a rate increase, next year on the electric fund. Having looked at the revenues for this year, the expectation in the electric fund puts us somewhere around $2.5 million revenue ahead of expenses. If we look at the water fund, the revenues are $12.6 million, the expenses are $11.2 million. And I believe, you know, that also includes the $2.3 million a year that is being paid for the debt on the underutilized raw water project. And then the wastewater is much closer, $2.3 million, to nearly $2.2 million. But again, in each one of these funds, we are already taking in more money than our expenses are. And if we look back at projections from a couple of years ago, the revenues have been running ahead of what the projections had been. These increases have allegedly been based on a rate study that I believe was completed in 2015. Is that correct? 2015 is when that was completed?
2016.
2016, all right. We're now three years later, we're seeing the actual revenues that are coming in be ahead of the projections, and my concern is to continue to put automatic increases in place when we are already ahead of where we thought we would be. I just don't feel it's particular. I'd be happy to go over the individual points that I made in the memo, if anyone has any questions about that.
Any questions for Mr. McManus?
I would like to just make a correction for the record. The rate study was actually completed in 2015. However, there was a number of discussions that ensued afterwards, and then the final approval occurred in 2016. But the rate study itself actually was completed in 2015.
Thank you for that. And again, the, the point being that those are now numbers that are four years old. They weren't based on things like the replacement of the meters on our electric system. I believe that project is now complete. There appears to be a better accounting of the electricity that's being sold to individual customers with the replacement of those meters, that I think has added to the, the reason we're seeing some of the increased revenue that was above what the projections were. Now, I know, and, and again, Mr. Porter, I'll leave it up to you. If you wanted to make your presentation, you'd also placed a analysis in the agenda packet.
Come on up, Dennis, thank you.
Dennis Porter, Utilities Director. Thank you, Mayor, Council, for this opportunity. So, staff did prepare a report. Within that report, there's a number of bullet points with regards to our concerns with not going forward with the 2.5% increase. We totally agree that there needs to be better data. We've, you know, we've gone forward with getting the Utility Advisory Committee put in place, we're going to move forward with the rate study. Some of our concerns, just to kind of hit it at a high level, are more related, and let's use electric as an example. The Boulder, or the 69 KV Loop was projected to be a $2 million project. That project came in closer to $3.9 million. So some of the concerns staff have are just that. We have concerns about the construction cost and the escalation of construction cost, and so if we put, push off those rate increases, that could then just kind of exacerbate the problem, once we get real good data and come back with a utility rate study that we can all have some faith and confidence in. I also want to just say something with regards to some of the comments that we heard from the public. There is certainly a philosophy that was put into place with regards to the rate structure as it exists today. But the fact of the matter is, you either got to get the revenue from your basic service charges, or you got to get it from, from your commodity. So it's going to come from one of those, unless we decide to provide a different revenue source to help pay for capital programs or capital projects. From a utility director perspective, just with regards to one of Councilman McManus' bullet points is, you could use revenue from the solar leases, and that's certainly true. That's unfamiliar territory for a utility director, because typically, we're trying to make those enterprise funds self-sufficient. So, not that I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth, but that's different, and that is a philosophy that I think we need to discuss, and could certainly be addressed as part of the rate study. as part of the rate study. There is a number of comments that Councilman McManus made that are accurate with regards to the Forest Main Project on the wastewater side. We don't know what we're doing with that project and that 2.5% on the wastewater side, probably, you know, could you delay that portion? Yeah, you probably could because that's a big dollar item that was included in the rate study. But the fact of the matter is, we don't have a plan for that yet. I would like to think that we get through with our discussions with the Water Authority with regards to what do with the effluent. We can certainly clear that up. That's going to take time. Just one more comment on the SNWA water increases. And Councilman McManus, I'm not sure if we gave you that information on 2.5%. It was wrong.
You did.
So 2018 and 2019 were 3%. In the years thereafter, they're using a CPI adjustment, 1.5% to 4.5% on their wholesale water rates for both the potable and the raw. What else? There was a, you did make a comment about the market purchases for electricity, which I didn't have the answer for that during the budget process. Since then, I've had some discussion with the Colorado River Commission. Because they're making those purchases in a, kind of on a five-year program, those costs are not, you are correct, they aren't automatic increases, but they are building in inflation and increased capital and construction costs into those rates, if you will. So, but they do not do an automatic, which you correctly state. I think at the end of the day, the difficult part of this discussion is, we're a pay-go utility. So we don't bond, we don't spread costs out, and those construction and capital costs, they, they change. I'll give you an example. Uh-oh. I can't see it now, but. The B.C. Tap-to-Becannon overhead line is estimated to be an $8 million project. Those estimates were done during the rate study. Our confidence in those estimates is not that good. We need to take a really hard look at that, obviously will very soon. But then that's one of those, it's hard to give you a really good answer, but we anticipate that cost for that project's going to be more than $8 million. So not generating that revenue now will require us to generate more revenue down the road. And hence, the, there's a high potential that recommended rates could be higher. That being said, it's kind of council's prerogative and we're certainly here to answer questions.
Well, I appreciate you, you know, clearing up some of those points. There is one point I want to make about this year's budget. We already have almost $6.4 million in capital projects that are budgeted within this year's budget. I know that we have a lot of projects that have been put off for years in this town, having the utility fund depleted in order to build the Boulder Creek Golf Course. And again, I know there are comments that, well, that money was paid back. Well, it's paid back by taking money from elsewhere. There are a lot of projects that have been put off. Have you reached your four-month anniversary yet here in Boulder City?
In dog ears?
Yeah.
I couldn't calculate what that is, but yes.
So I, the point I'm making there is, I understand we have new people on board here. It's going to take some time for everybody to get acclimated, to understand what the priorities are. Certainly, council needs to be informed of that as well. But the point is, right now, we seem to be in very good shape. And there's one thing that always seems to be true, is if you give government money, they're going to find a way to spend it. My concern is that rather than doing it that way, that we wait until we get this rate study done, then we can make a determination of where to go, rather than imposing these automatic increases when we already appear to be running surpluses in these funds. Do I understand there could be expenses down the road? I do understand that. But we already have substantial reserves in a lot of these funds. We are also expecting, or hoping, we've got a couple of new solar projects that may be coming online here shortly. Again, at some point, we need to stop going to the people of Boulder City and saying, "Look, you have to keep paying for all these past mistakes." The raw water line that we're having to pay $2.3 million a year for, and I think that goes out to something like 2032 or something. We've got additional revenue that most cities don't have any opportunity to realize through our solar leases. That money should be benefiting the folks that live here and not just finding ways to grow our government to meet what that revenue is. So again, I appreciate what you're saying. I know it's going to take you some time to establish the priorities, but my focus is, rather than asking people to put more money in while we get all of that together, let's just hold on. We don't seem to be in the red on any of this. Let's see what we're going to do after the rate study is completed. We'll get input from our newly created Citizen Advisory Committee. Then we can make those decisions. We can explain to the rate payers here in Boulder City why we're having to do certain things instead of saying, "You know what? Just give us more money and we'll tell you if things are okay or not." We need to do it a different way.
All right. Councilmembers, any questions, comments? Mr. Schuman?
Hi, there, gentlemen.
Okay. Mr. Haray, go ahead.
Yeah, my comments are both philosophical and factual. First off, I hear that terms of our 2.5% rate increase in perpetuity without any provision for formal review each year is basically boneheaded in my mind. Because if you take that 2.5% and compound it over a 10-year period, you've got a 28% rate increase. So it really is a poor way to raise money. The money should be raised as it is needed with some provision for emergencies. And touching on what Mr. McManus said, I think, you know, especially this year, we're going to get 1.8 billion projected income out of our lease revenues. And looking at the budget that's coming up, a million dollars of that is going to be paid to various studies. And then, at least that additional money is going to go for adding employees. And I want to thank Ms. Philgier for providing those paragraphs of descriptions of those employees. After reviewing them, I see that I believe there's a fairly high percentage of those that are not essential to providing services to the citizens of Boulder City, but are more likely to have, would have been a good idea. But again, they're non-essential. I have a problem with the, the data that was submitted in the packet on Thursday. I don't believe a lot of people have had an opportunity over the holiday weekend to dig into everything that was there. And one thing I found lacking was a format for the replacement rates, that if you're going to replace, repeal something, we can't repeal it without having a replacement. And what I would like to see, and I think requires further work, is a resolution for each one of these in the same format as the prior resolutions, so that you can do an A and B comparison on each item in those rate schedules. The other point is, the fact that the approach that's being discussed, I don't believe is aggressive enough. And by that, I mean, if you take a look at the connection charges, which in some cases have more than doubled, my comment was made by one of the people here earlier tonight about he has to pay $80 a month before he turns the light bulb on or turns the faucet on. And that $80 a month is like $960 a year, that's $1,000 a year effectively. And I believe we have about 4,500 residential customers, and take that and extrapolate that, it comes up to $4 million or $4.5 million. And we got to get it from someplace. Well, again, we got that 1.8 million that's coming in. Not all of it should go in the manner which it is right now. General fund, 80% and 20% capital improvement fund. We have, as council, the ability to change that formulation. And the real reason I want to change is, is I'd like to see benefits derived from those whole leases find their way into the pocketbooks and budgets of the citizens of Boulder City that are paying their monthly utility bills. The other items here, like I said, I believe that what's been presented here tonight is not comprehensive enough for us to take action on. But I also do not want to see a 2.5% rate increase come on July 1st. So I'd like to propose that we make a, consider making a motion to defer this rate increase for a period of six months, not three months, but six months. At which time, we'll have time to have a full staff, Citizens Utility Advisory Committee up and operational to give their input. We'll have more time for our new Utilities Director to find his footing and his quid mire of information. And also, I think what would be important for us to do as city council is to schedule a utility rates workshop, that the public can attend, but we could, we could consult with each other openly. City council meetings themselves are difficult to have frank discussions. The workshop, you can have the discussions as long as you don't come to a decision. And so what we're trying to do is get the best ideas from all quarters of the citizenry, all quarters of our city council. So I think that's an essential thing that would take place within a six-month period. So, and on the up, I agree with Mr. McManus' thrust here. I think it's not aggressive enough because it doesn't cover those connection fees. And the other thing that I just want to emphasize is that, at some point, we have to consider that so the solar field money is being very special, not just another form to go into the general fund hot and dissipate it. I think most citizens would like to see some effect on their everyday life, or at least their every month's life, when those utility bills come through. So I would like to just consider the idea of, again, deferring the rate increase for six months until we get a handle on all the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schuman?
Thank you, Mayor. One way to defer for six months would just be to not take action for six months, just throwing that out there. I think both council members have really excellent points. One, one thing I heard Councilman Haray say was a comprehensive approach, and I think when I first saw this, that was my first, my first challenge with it, was that it isn't comprehensive enough and maybe doesn't go deeper enough. It's, I remember when I first got on council four years ago, they just handed me a 9,000-page rate study and said, you know, "Read this and start figuring out what we're going to do with this." And it wasn't easy. But we spent months and months working on a comprehensive plan, which really, for me, had a lot to do with capital improvement projects. And the first thing I did was go out with the utilities folks and tour all of these facilities and see what was aging and what needed to be fixed and started putting some costs associated to that. So when it comes to, when it comes to rates, we have to look at capital improvement costs associated with rates, certainly the connection fees. Public comment tonight really, really hit home, the $86 a month before you turn on anything. I thought that was a very impactful comment. And I think Councilman Haray's alluding to that as well and has been. We talked in our last meeting, in our budget meeting, about maybe there's an alternative that's not 2.5%. Maybe it's 1.1%. Maybe it's .05%. We don't know. We don't know what that number is. But that's a comprehensive, that's a comprehensive approach that needs to happen here. So I have a question for staff. First of all, it sounds like staff isn't on board with this. It's kind of the feeling I'm getting, that Councilman McManus proposed it, staff is not in favor of it. I don't know, you know, if I'm reading, if I'm reading that correctly, but that's the feeling that I'm getting. But I'm going to ask a question of staff. I'm not sure who answers this, but what, when are we going to take a comprehensive look at utility rates? What's the plan?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. The comprehensive approach is part of the budget that will be before you for final adoption on May 28th. In that budget, we are contemplating having specific studies that take a very deep dive on analyzing this utility systems that we have, the conditions that they're in, and what is it going to take to maintain them at an acceptable level into the future. That study, both on the electrical side, water and wastewater specifically, will help drive, and ultimately, the rate study that also is being proposed in this next budget. We are in year four of the rate study that was done in 2015. So it is, you know, typically takes almost a year to do a rate study. So it is time to do that. And once that rate study is completed, it will, well, in order to be completed, it will need some of the data that will be coming out of those three particular studies on the infrastructure. The infrastructure is what is going to drive any need for future rate increases as we truly get a handle of where we're at with the infrastructure across all three of those utilities going forward, not over the next one year, five years, but over the life of the system, if we in fact want to make sure that we are planning for maintaining the system over the life of that system. The other thing that I want to make sure that we leave with the council is, the staff, obviously, we want to, you know, recommend that we don't go forward with that because in the current budget, if the council does decide not to go forward and repeal these, then we will take an $800,000 roughly, I don't know the exact number, I'm looking at the Finance Director, change in the budget. I do know specifically, in the water budget, it will negatively impact and actually put the water budget in the deficit by, somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000. Also, keep in mind that the comments were made that, that, you know, the solar lease monies are not in fact, or maybe not enough impacting the particular community as a whole. In fact, a million and a half dollars of the Capital Improvement Fund, which is funded by solar lease monies in this next fiscal year, we have a million and a half dollars of capital improvement specifically targeting the water system and a project to, to help fund that. Because currently, the water fund cannot fund any capital projects going forward. Although it is true that there are more revenues coming in, as depicted when you just look at the high level when it comes to the utility funds versus the expenses, what we also inform the council is that we are recommending that the excess revenues that do come in, that they be utilized to fund additional capital projects in this next fiscal year versus any other use of those monies going forward. But certainly, it is up to the council. It is a policy decision on how you choose to use those funds going forward. If the council tonight decides to repeal that, then staff will need to go back and redo the utility budget. redo the utility budgets, show the decrease of whatever those funds are, whether it's six months, whether it's a year's worth, and readjust those particular projects. I did ask the public works director and utilities director to look at what impacts those are going to be with any particular capital improvement project specifically that we have targeted for funding and design and construction this next year. And I believe they may have some example of those. But at this point, finance director can certainly jump in and specifically talk about the fiscal impact of not receiving those two and a half percent in this next fiscal year. So I'll turn it over to the finance director.
Thank you. I think your question is an excellent question, and I don't think staff being, looking at the best interest of the city could agree that this would be a good idea. And in the short term, it probably, there won't be a problem. But again, when we have all these unknowns on these studies that are going to be taking place, and we anticipate that a lot of the costs that we have right now in our CIP are probably understated, we believe that it could end up hurting the community in the long run because then all of a sudden, we're going to come back, we'll come back with higher numbers and greater needs, and that'll hurt the pocketbooks of the citizens. I guess the other comment I'd like to make-
Hey, please refrain from yelling out, please.
The other comment I wanted to make was that these are enterprise funds, each one of these utilities. And part of the way enterprise funds function is they do create a profit so that they have money to do the infrastructure repairs needed, which are expensive to keep all these utilities running so that the residents of the city can have electricity when they flip a switch and have water when they turn the faucet, and they can flush their toilet. So all these things require maintenance, and I don't think the maintenance has been done as faithfully as it probably should have been over the last few years, and we're going to have to catch up with that at some point. So I guess we cannot, as responsible public officials for the city, like in our positions, support this. And I think I provided that data during the budget meetings.
Thank you for that long answer to that question.
And Mayor, council, just to kind of focus on the water fund just for a little bit, the way we would look at that fund, because it seems to be the one that's most impacted, is we would take a look at the projects that are scheduled for FY '20. There's a number of projects there which essentially, they're lower-risk projects. If we don't do them, you know, it won't likely lead to some sort of regulatory issue or something. Their projects need to be done, but what would happen is they would be pushed out. So large meter replacement program and backflow replacements, which are in need of obviously being replaced, we have some pretty old large meters out there. Those do impact revenue, obviously, because they're probably not, they're probably reading low, not high. But those are the types of projects that we would most likely push out, essentially, more related to the water fund because it's the one that's getting hit the hardest.
Okay, so we're providing a very comprehensive answer now to a very direct question here. And I think that's my whole point with this, is that when we talk about capital projects, it helps when we really get specific about those capital projects, like you just did with that answer. So Councilman Harhey also mentioned something about having something to replace whatever we repeal. I don't think that's, I think that's an idea worth looking at, too. What I'm hearing is an idea by Councilmember McManus that is not supported by our staff and, to me, doesn't feel fiscally responsible. Not that I don't want to stop raising rates or lower rates or help with rates or study the rates. However, the way this has been presented and the way we're approaching this tonight doesn't feel fiscally responsible to me. That's all.
Well, I'd like to respond to that. As far as the water fund goes, by not doing this two-point-five percent increase for the water fund, it takes away about three-hundred thousand in revenue, is that correct? And again, my suggestion was that we have money left over from what's already been allocated of this new one-point-eight million in lease money that's expected. There is that much of that left, according to what I saw in the budget. Is that correct or incorrect?
You're saying that there's one-point-eight million left?
You had a breakout of the one-point-eight million that's coming in, how much was going to salaries, that type of thing. And it appears, at least from the calculation that you had included in the information we received, that there was over three-hundred thousand that was not allocated from that one-point-eight million.
I'm not recalling which part of the presentation that was.
Well, we can talk about it, but I guess the point I'm getting at is, I didn't just start throwing darts at a board and saying, hey, we can do this. I looked at the budget, I saw that there was money left. My understanding is, too, that every fund, not just our utility funds, but every fund in the city currently has a twenty percent surplus, a twenty percent reserve now.
It's a reserve fund.
Okay, so across the board, within our city budget, everybody has a twenty percent reserve, is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so again, to try and frame this as, well, somehow we're going to be hurt by this, when we apparently have the capital now that we could refocus, we have substantial reserves already, and we are already looking at projects that are out there on the horizon for new solar lease money to come in. So I just want to make sure that this suggestion is not characterized as some fanciful flight of mind that, well, we just won't do it. With regard to pushing this off for six months, we did that last year, and exactly nothing was accomplished by doing so. We took no action. We let the six months go by. That saved a little bit of money for the ratepayers, but nothing was done. It just went into effect the same as everything else. There was no work done to look at how the revenues were coming up against the expenses. And again, I didn't just look at this year's budget, I looked at the last three years' budgets, and we seem to keep running surpluses and then getting rate increases on top of that. Capital projects that were supposed to have been done have not been completed, which leaves even more money in those reserve accounts if we never spent the money. I understand that the money needs to be spent, but the fact is, we've not spent that money. It's still sitting there waiting to be spent. As far as how our system has been maintained in the past, well, it's never been maintained. And it all rolls up to where we are at the present day, where we do have needs that have to be addressed. But the fact is, we have millions of dollars each year in our capital budgets that don't seem to get expended for capital projects. They get put off. So that money didn't go away, it's still there, it's still waiting to be spent. We just never seem to spend it. Before the accounting changes had been made in the utility fund, that fund was showing a twenty-two-million-dollar reserve. Some of that, I understand, I believe five million of that was set aside for a rate stabilization. In other words, if some of our providers came to us and said, you know, we've had an emergency, we're going to have to raise your rates, we had five million dollars sitting there to take care of that. Now, all of a sudden, we break this out, a lot of those reserves seem to have evaporated, and yet, we're still showing surpluses, and the revenue we're taking in is exceeding the expenses that are being budgeted. So I want to get away from this, well, gee, you threw something out there that we weren't going to do something. I've looked at these numbers. We have surpluses in these accounts, and I think it's very important that instead of postponing something, we tell the ratepayers, you know what, until we really get a handle on things, we're not going to keep asking you for more money. It's important that we leave that with them. So I think there's a lot in here. I would, again, encourage all of the council members to take a look because the information that was included in the packet, I think, shows pretty clearly that that money is there, it is available, and we're not going to go in the red until we get this rate study done. I'm assuming we're looking at a rate study being done?
It should start shortly after the fiscal year, and we expect it to be done in the springtime and presented to the council before the actual budget for operations and maintenance for FY 2021.
What essentially will happen will be, there'll be a number of meetings with the Utility Advisory Committee.
I'm sorry. There'll be a number of meetings with the Utility Advisory Committee to inform and educate early on. During that same time, we'll be doing the engineering aspects of the condition assessment studies. And so there'll probably be a little bit of a lull after the initial, you know, touring facilities, educating them on the rate structures and rate philosophies and all those things we need to do upfront, educate them on the O and M budgets and those sorts of things with each one of the utility funds. There'll be a little bit of a lull because we'll be waiting for the results of those studies. And then towards the spring of next year, we would be hopefully getting into more of the meat results for those studies that would help us populate the capital improvement plan for the next five to ten years, which obviously, that would go back to the rate consultant to start crunching those numbers to see what, you know, those things look like. The discussion here is incredibly healthy because a lot of what we're talking about with regards to the two and a half percent really is bigger than that because we're talking about what the rate structure is going to look like in the future, and we're really not quite ready to have that discussion yet. But it's certainly a good lead-up to us sitting down with Mayor and Council and the Utility Advisory Committee early on to start formulating those options of what those structures could be because clearly, if there's going to be revenue that's going to be provided from a different source, the consultants got to know that going in because it changes everything. And that's something, obviously, we'd have to get input and feedback from Mayor and Council, as well as Utility Advisory Committee, because that, in essence, is going to lead a lot of what the results of that rate study are going to look like.
Thank you for that clarification. Again, that does bring out the point, though, that for sixty years of neglect of our utilities, which is obvious when you look at many of the infrastructure components here in town, to say we can't afford ten months until we get that study done, again, I don't think that's the case. But I also think that if we put the two and a half percent in come July 1st, it's never coming back out.
Councilwoman Lovett.
I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Harhey.
First off, a correction, this is McManus. He had mentioned that we had a six-month deferment last year, and that's not the case. It was a three-month deferment, and the sole reason for that is not having a rate increase go into effect at the highest peak energy use, which is further, it's difficult for folks to discuss. So there was a three-month deferment, and there was no action tied to it. The reason for six months is that, and we construction such a way, that things must be done at the end of that six months. So it isn't just a period of, I had a deferment, but it's a period of, one, get the input of the Citizens Advisory Committee, and get this input from other folks in the city as well. And realistically, it's going to take more than three months to come up with that information. That's why I propose that we defer it for six months because right now, the documents before us are not even appropriate to, as a replacement document. I don't see it as the same format as the previous resolution. And I wouldn't want to vote up something that doesn't have the full format structure. But I also don't want to let the community hang out on another two and a half percent I would think that we have to do something about that, obviously, before it goes to effect. Now seems to be an appropriate time to discuss it, and now also seems an appropriate time to discuss the follow-on that we do at the end of it. Because at last year's resolution to defer, it was just to defer it. There was no promise of doing anything else. And I agree with Mr. McManus, it's accomplished only the fact that people weren't hit with their high rate increase or the rate increase during the war but once in a year. But it was not intended to do anything. That's why I'm saying a six-month with the intention to actually have an output that we can act on is more reasonable. If you look at the document that's before, it's in the packet, I don't believe there are many people that have looked at it since last Thursday and understand all of the implications. So it's going to take some time for that to be discussed and explained, and also to have a replacement resolution at place, even if it's a temporary one, rather than to let this rate increase go to effect. And I agree, once it's in effect, it's not going to be rescinded. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Lovett.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Councilman Harhey in that when we deferred that last payment, I don't know that there was any action that we were to take. But I think we're really in a unique position right now because we do have a new utilities director, and we have just formed this Citizens Advisory Committee, and they haven't even been selected yet. It sounds like to do a rate study, and one of my questions was, do you know, Mr. Porter, if this is the same company that we'll be contracting with to do our rate study, is it the same company that we used last time?
No. It will not be the same company. In fact, I'm not even sure the last company is still in business. They were a small company who have since retired, is my understanding, but they may be around. That being said, we will be using one of the premier rate consultants in the country. They've done hundreds and hundreds of rate studies, not only for small communities, but small, big, large. They have staff that are well-qualified to do this type of work. They understand the desert southwest, the challenges with water and power, and they'll provide us with a team that I think we will have full confidence in. Clearly, one of the first things they'll have to do is get some of that feedback that's going to be really important on how we move forward for them to be able to not only provide feedback to Mayor and Council, but to the committee on, you know, what the impacts of certain decisions could be if you decide to move forward with a different type of rate structure, or if you decide to put more of the revenue requirement on the commodity side and less on the basic service charge side, you know, what are those impacts? There's positives and negatives to all of those. So, yeah, we will be using a different firm, and they will be most likely interviewing each and every one of you and getting feedback that they need to do their job.
Well, I just, and I think staff is doing their responsibility when they're telling us to consider the risk of not doing this. And I think Councilman Schuman was right on target when he made his remarks because we have been in the position as a council before with dealing with the fact of when you're kicking the can down the road, you know, what happens and the kind of situation we got ourselves in. But I also think that we're in a different situation now because this rate study has been planned. We do have a new utilities director. We have this new utility advisory commission. We have, when you're talking about a comprehensive look, they'll be a very comprehensive look at all of this. And I think it needs to be considered the residents' comfort level with our utility rates. And so they need to understand that when we have this new rate study and all of these factors are taken into place, rates may go up, we don't know. We need to have this assessment done of our utility infrastructure. We're, at this point, we don't know because the assessment hasn't been done. So a year from now, if we're talking in the spring from now, we'll have a lot more information and can make a much better decision with respect to utility rates. So I don't know, and I probably know the least about this than anybody because I don't have a math brain, but I don't know in the whole scheme of things that a 2.5% increase in rates is going to make a huge difference in the long run. And I think we have the opportunity right now to look at all of this information that's going to be coming in the next year so that we have a lot of eyes on this project, we have a lot of people weighing in, and that the residents have their opportunity to have input, but that their people really have an understanding of why we arrived at the decision that will be made in the next spring with respect to utility rates. So that's kind of what I'm feeling.
All right, we will open this up to public comments. If you've already spoken, don't come up again on this item. Oh, Mr. City Manager, come on up.
I just, yes, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, again, I just want to clear the record that once the new rate study is accepted by the council, it in fact wipes out the previous rate studies because it will incorporate, if need be, any potential rate that might be part of the older study. So for example, you know, we've heard tonight, well, the current rate structure says 2.5% in perpetuity and whatnot. That may actually go away. That might be incorporated as part of the overall new rate structure that you will be contemplating. And so in essence, anything that, with this particular rate structure, will be wiped away and be then taken over by the new rate structure. So I want to make sure that is clear, that it's not a 2.5% in perpetuity regardless of whatever this new rate structure. If this new rate structure says, oh, we need no rate increases whatsoever, that 2.5% would not go into effect. It would go away because it's now a new rate structure that now takes precedence over any previous rate structure that was in place. So I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that brings out another point that I had made earlier. The information that this is being based on, this 2.5% increase, was established in 2015, four years ago. The projections that were arrived at in 2015 have proven to be short of the actual revenues that have been generated from the increases that were imposed. So once again, we're running ahead of target right now, based on what was in that 2015 study. So to say, well, no, we have to have this 2.5, well, we're already ahead of where we were supposed to be. So to say, no, we need another 2.5, it just doesn't wash. The data is now old. We're talking about perhaps a 10-month period of time here. We have reserves in all these accounts. We're running surpluses in all these accounts. So we're saying, no, we're still tied to that old data, even though it appears that the old data was incorrect. We've actually surpassed what that old data was. So I think that's another point to keep in mind here. We're already ahead of where we were supposed to be.
Thank you. Come on up.
I just have a few thoughts.
Please say.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sharon Resnikoff. Firstly, Mr. Schuman, I find it quite curious that when you started to speak, before any staff had spoken, you looked around the room and said, I'm getting the feeling that staff is against this, before anyone had ever spoken. So either there were discussions behind the scenes, which it kind of, or you have extreme telepathic powers, reading minds of everybody and that they were against this. And I also, this just seems like so much smoke and mirrors to me, and I wish I could take little clips of soundbites, you know, well, we need more feedback, we need more studies, we need more to study our rate philosophies, we need to study our rate structures, we need to study, study, study. You've already done studies, you've got figures in hand, and I just feel like this is all procrastination. I think that you're throwing smoke and mirrors up for the citizens, and I don't think you're listening to what the citizens want and need. And I think this is your opportunity for once to listen to the citizens. We don't want rate increases, and we want you to wait and make.
Sharon, I just need to interrupt you. I don't mind you commenting on what Mr. Schuman says, but you can't just address him. You need to address the council as a whole.
I am addressing the council.
Please do.
Yeah. And that was an observation based on something that was said here tonight just moments ago. So I feel fully in my right to comment on that. I found it quite curious that he gazed about the room before anybody else had spoken and said that he's getting the feeling that staff is against this. How could he know? Nobody had spoken at that point. So either there were discussions behind closed doors or behind the scenes before this evening's meeting, or he has great telepathic powers. That's my comment. Listen to the citizens.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tom Tyler. I'd like to say something for our restricted income people as far as our rates. Boulder City, if a family uses 6,000 gallons of water, their bill is $51.90. If we charged Henderson rates, their bill is $22.03. If they use 16,000 gallons of water, Boulder City pays $91.90, where Henderson, the charge is $44.23. We reward people that use more water. When they use 40,000 gallons of water, Boulder charges $141.03, where Henderson charges $133.41. Now, I also compare some things with the commercial things. Because Scotty Golf Course, if we charged what Henderson charges for their water rate, we would have picked up almost $750,000. There's that much difference in the rates. They got a special rate or whatever, I don't know, but I mean, we really need to go through our rates and find out, you know, what's going on. So that's my comment. We should not reward high use. We should just do the opposite. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
You know, we also have a $1.23 million transformer that was purchased last year and sat for a year. So I have a real big question about what you're doing with money from the citizens, and does that come out of our utility fund? And the negligence or, you know, impact that our money, where is it going? You know, we've had these studies done, and it looks like the study was wrong because we have more money than what the study said we were going to have. And now we're saying we're not going to have enough money if we do this, this if and what and, you know, things. I have a neighbor who has a 200-square-foot home, and he spends $200 a month on utilities. And I think there's something wrong with that. And I think there's something wrong with this council and the way that you spend money and where you decide where it goes. And there's, of course, you know, to us, you may might be hearing just, oh, we don't want more money spent, but you don't know what it's like to be us and to worry every time you open a utility envelope each month. There are citizens who have that struggle every single month, and I need you to start listening to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
James Howard Adams. I just wanted to echo the sentiment that I feel the rate increases that happened in 2016 were flawed, just in the fact that it does burden, I think unfairly, those with lower fixed incomes when, at the very base of it, you're paying $80 right off the bat. I mean, that affects those with less more. When you just apply 2.5% across the board, once again, that affects those with less more, as opposed to having a tiered system where you're charging more for the heaviest users who put the most stress on the system. So I think that's very unfortunate that we went for it in that direction at all. To me, it sounds like we're not going to, the city's infrastructure isn't going to crumble apart if we don't get this 2.5% this year. And if we're going to be having an entire new rate study that's going to be done, which it sounds like is going to change everything, I don't understand why we can't put this off because if it's going to be changing everything anyways, it can take into account any money that might have been lost right then. We have the reserves, reserves are there to be spent in case they are needed. We don't even know that they aren't going to be needed to be spent. The other thing, I hear it was mentioned that it sounds like there was already a firm decided on who was going to be the rate study. I would think that it would behoove us, the citizens, to have the Utilities Advisory Committee to help inform on that decision. I think from the very get-go, from the very, what we want, the whole reason we wanted this Utilities Advisory Committee is so that we can have faith in the whole process, so that we know in the end that every, you know, T was crossed, every I was dotted, so that everything was done to the best of its capabilities. And I think by including our citizens who have that technical knowledge involved in the very beginning of this is imperative to this whole process, to making sure that we are confident that our money is being spent wisely, you know? We all know that we need to reinvest within our own city, whether that's the utility infrastructure or any other thing. That's part of what being a city is. But we need to have confidence that it's being done in the right way. And I think from, I know personally, I feel this way, and I know that many feel the same way, is that there isn't that confidence right now. And I think to just go on with this 2.5% increase for, because we might need it for the next 10 months, it sounds like, without that, everything could blow up. I don't know. I think that's, I just think it's wrong to make people feel that we're in that dire of a shape when everybody always talks about how great of a condition Boulder City is. And I don't think 2.5% is going to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Dominique Viper. Just listening to Karen and some of the things that he has brought up, it seems like we have a surplus and extra money coming in. When I think of Boulder City and hearing about all the money coming in with the solar leases and all the surpluses that we have in all the accounts, and, you know, this isn't 2007, when we were, you know, budget was really terrible. We're kind of a well-off city. And to hear these solar leases coming in and hiring 15 new employees last year at contracts that are so ridiculous to me, and the benefit packages, and we have 13 more coming, 1,800, you know, a million eight coming from solar leases, let's hire more here, let's spend more there, and for some reason, we have these rate increases for the citizens that doesn't make sense to me. We are spending, 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 and taking from the citizens. We have surplus over here, surplus over there. How about using some of that money to at least keep the rates where they're at? We've already taken a hit. And stop employing more people that we don't need. I just heard Harhey say that he went over each of the employment people that are going to be hired, some of them not being necessary. I'd be interested in seeing that list too, I'll ask him for it. But let's stop spending money at the top and stop taking from the people at the bottom. And keeping things level right now sounds really good to me. I'm sure if we run into an emergency, there's money somewhere in all those accounts, maybe not hire 13 people, maybe only hire necessity people and keep that money to the side in case we need it. Thank you.
I don't feel that I have enough information yet to say one way or another on the rate increase, but I would like to not defend Councilman Schuman, but say, I too got the same opinion that you did. It was not that no one had spoken first and that you had divined it. The Utilities Director did speak, and in my personal opinion, I heard from him that staff was not recommending this increase either. So I don't feel like you pulled that out of thin air. It was my.
Kelly.
Interpretation.
Address all of this, please.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry. So I do not feel like that was pulled out of thin air or that there was some backdoor discussion. That was also my interpretation, was from listening to Utilities Director Porter speak, that staff was not recommending this increase. In fact, I think he specifically said that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trausdahl, did you want to speak?
Okay.
Okay. Just checking. All right, please.
Good evening. Fred Bolz for the record. I'd like to bring up some other issues that I haven't heard discussed tonight on the subject of question 14 on the agenda. First of all, in looking at the overhead contributions by the various utility entities, the percentage is not equal. The water is at about 9%, the electric is at about 12%, and the wastewater is at about 15%. But in the budget documents from the Finance Director's Department, we don't see any justification for that. And it would be very helpful to know where that money is going and why it needs to be a different amount for the different functions. Also, there doesn't seem to have been any analysis done about the utility administration function, which is taking 3.4 million a year. And with a new utility director, that would seem to be a prime opportunity to decide whether that could be operated for less money more efficiently in some other way than it is presently. I'll use as precedent Social Security Administration, which calculates an increase based on what they determine the CPI to be annually. And that would seem to be the same sort of methodology the city should be using in figuring out a percentage increase, if indeed that's the case. Also, I'm troubled by the advisory status of the Utility Committee and believe it should have the same authority to recommend to the council as the Planning Commission does in the city. I'd also point out that it's fiscally irresponsible to collect money from the public when there is no cogent need demonstrated for its use. And that's precisely why you would have the rate study and precisely why you would do a thorough analysis of what the capital improvements are, as they are needed for this community. I'm also troubled by the RFP process in the announcement that I heard tonight, that this rate consultant has already been selected with no input, no RFP process. And I think that the Utility Committee, whatever its format ultimately is, needs to have some meaningful input on the selection of the consultant. And finally, I was troubled to learn that the city doesn't regulate and meter its own water usage at its own facilities. In parks and other parts of the city that are using water, some of them have meters, some of them don't. And it would be helpful to know, first of all, from a conservation standpoint, what's happening, and if something could be done better. But more importantly, the city ratepayers, businesses and individuals have to subsidize whatever water is being used by the city is not being paid for or somehow controlled. Thank you.
Thank you. Others? All right, we will close our public comment period. And I do have some comments on this. So I'll address the easy issue first, which I think is the deferral that Councilman Harhey is suggesting. We've done that every year to make sure that the rate increases happen in the fall. And I don't know the real reason why it wasn't written into the resolution in the first place, but we changed that in 2016 to make sure that the rate increases happen in October or September. We did that again last year and whatever other intervening years. And so I think that that's a wise thing to do. But that's a separate issue, I think, than what we're talking about in terms of how this all came about in the first place, as well as where we should be now, where we are now, and where that should take us in the future. You know, the automatic, what's called the automatic 2.5% annual increases, and we've heard also tonight that there is one more, not just an annual, but another electric rate increase next year, which was built in. And so there wouldn't be a 2.5% increase in electric until after that one happens anyway. So there wouldn't be any this year in electric, if I'm not mistaken. Those are. Those only kick in afterwards. But, you know, the, the way Councilmember McManus kind of set this up was, you know, we have revenues in excess of expenses. Well, that was expected from, from the get-go. We didn't just raise rates to cover operating expenses, although in the water utility, we could have, because that one was upside down. But, you know, we were breaking even before in electrical, roughly, back in 2015, 2016. If it was just about operating expenses, it wouldn't be an issue. The reason for the rate increases in the first place is exactly what Councilmember Schuman said earlier, which is the heavy infrastructure needs we have. And, you know, when Mr. McManus talks about 60 years of neglect, I mean, you know, that's, that's framing it. And, you know, I'm not saying that all past councils and all past staff completely neglected everything, but there's, it's, there's no doubt, and I said this for years before we ever increased the rates, is we kept kicking the can on infrastructure. There's probably some explanations as to why, and each council could tell you why. I know that we had a recession, that was one reason why, that we weren't able to spend lots of money on infrastructure projects during, you know, ensuing years after 2008. But the rate increase was necessary because of a huge aging infrastructure need. And you can't just talk about these things in a vacuum and not, and, and throw that aside, because the infrastructure needs were the only reason we did it in the first place. And not just based on a five-year plan on infrastructure, it was a 10-plus-year plan. And because we had to especially get our electrical utility back up to where it needs to be. And we're just barely starting into that. And, you know, there is a pacing issue, because you can only go so fast. There's only so much you can do in any given year. I mean, in an ideal, perfect utopian world, you would redo all your utility infrastructure all at once. But you can't do that, because you don't have enough resources to do it, you don't have enough staff to do it. You have to, you know, you can't just shut down everybody's utilities all at once and just redo every part of the utility system all at once. So this of necessity is tapered in over time. And so that's why you have revenues in excess of expenses in the early years, because you've got 10 to 15-plus years of projects going out. And any discussion about whether it's enough or not enough has to review those projects and what the needs are. You can't just pretend like they don't exist. Otherwise, you're just, we're right back to square one, where we started in 2015 and 2016, which is kicking the can, kicking the can. And the utilities don't get any younger, they get older and older and older. So in terms of the, you know, in terms of our ability to review these things, that's true. We need to be reviewing these, these rate increases annually at least. We do that as part of our capital improvement plan in December, which carries forward through the budget cycle. We do it as part of our budget cycle when we have the workshops. We can and should have periodic workshops on these things to try to figure it out. But you can't do a rate study every six months or every year. I don't know, what, what do we estimate the rate study is going to cost us?
We've budgeted $200,000. I don't expect it to be more than that. If anything, it'll come in less than that.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you've ever heard me talk before, you know how I feel about studies. I'm not, I don't love studies for the reason that they cost a lot of money and, you know, garbage in, garbage out. You don't always get the greatest data coming out of the studies if they're not done correctly. However, on something as important as utilities, you know, you need some expert consulting help on these things to really be able to digest what the real needs are. You have to look, the, the experts, the professionals have to look at, you know, they can't just look at it in a vacuum either. They have to look at 10 years out or 15 years out and see what the needs are. Because if you're just planning past the end of your nose, one year at a time, then you're just going to get further and further into a hole. And that was the problem in the first place. Our water utility is different than our other utilities, because we have some special needs here in Boulder City that are different from other jurisdictions. It is true, I'm, you know, Mr. Tyler's numbers, I'm not sure if those numbers are accurate, but it is true that we are, we do pay slightly more in water than City of Henderson, I believe. I haven't looked at the numbers lately. But overall, our utilities are far and away less than other jurisdictions in Southern Nevada. Our electric is a full third less than other utilities anywhere in Southern Nevada. But our, but our specific needs in water are, as Mr. McManus has pointed out several times over past meetings in the last few months, we have this big raw water line debt. It's a big number. It's, you know, we paid down our other four or five debts, but we still have this one. And none of us created that debt, but we still have to pay it down. It's 26 million plus another 10 million in interest. And so to, to pretend like that debt doesn't exist, you can't do that, because, and you can't, just like you can't pretend like the infrastructure doesn't exist, you have to look at that. And so, you know, we could actually save ourselves $10 million in interest, or $5 million or whatever, if we aggressively paid that down and paid it off. Is it appropriate to look at other funding sources? Yes. You know, there's, Boulder City is unique in that regard as well. We do have solar lease revenues, but we also have, you know, restrictions on our ability to incur debt and spread things over time. And so, yes, we need to look at these things often. We need to look at them annually at least, but you can't do a rate study annually. But we are going into a rate study. We did create a Utilities Department last summer. We hired our Utilities Director just a few months ago. We moved forward and created the Utilities Advisory Commission just recently as well. And yes, this, that's an important part of what the Utilities Advisory Commission could do, is to be involved in getting the citizens involved, giving feedback. To the extent we have expertise on that committee and commission, they can weigh in on that and help us understand it. But to hijack that committee, committee's job in advance and say, no, we don't need to do this, that's wrong. Because when we, in 2016, when we raised the rates, it was to cover all these needs. And it was, at the time, it was 125-plus million dollars in infrastructure needs. And as been pointed out many times on various different projects, costs continue to rise on that. So what was 125 million dollars back then, maybe is 175 million or 200 million dollars today. It's hard to know until you have another rate study. Do we need to do another rate study? Yes. But the day you get the rate study, it's old. And you can't do them every month. So we need to let that process go forward, so we have the best information we can have at our fingertips, and then make a decision based on that. We can't do it in a vacuum. I kind of agree that the wastewater, the sewer, is inconsequential relative to those other two utilities. You know, we're, we're better than other jurisdictions on that. But that particular one wouldn't make a difference, one way or the other, compared to the other two, it's, it is inconsequential. So I disagree that we're ahead of target. I think we're still way behind target. I don't know the exact number that we're behind, but I know that we're way behind, because we have 26 million dollars plus 10 million dollars in debt to pay off. We have an upside-down water utility. A couple of years ago, the Southern Nevada Water Authority increased our rates. Mr. Ansminger was here tonight and didn't talk about that, but that was passed through and it's part of it. I don't disagree that maybe, you know, one area we should look at is the service charge. Because, you know, no, no two utilities do it all the same. You can compare apples to oranges all you want. You can compare Boulder City to Henderson, to Mesquite, to New York City, to Houston, Texas, doesn't matter. You will not find a gold standard right way to do it. One does not exist. They're all different, because they are all unique communities, and Boulder City is unique in, in terms of what our infrastructure needs are, what our size is, how we operate our utilities, and on and on and on. You can't compare exactly. We try to keep our utilities less than what other jurisdictions that are around us pay. And, you know, people that move in from Pennsylvania, they go, wow, what's everybody complaining about? Because you guys are so low, I pay three or four times as much from where I come from. That's not to say that, you know, we still shouldn't try to keep them low. We do. But you can't just pay for things out of thin air. You have to pay for them with something. One of the criticisms that we had to deal with when we were actually, it's, it's kind of funny how this comes full circle, but back in 2015 and 2016, you know, everybody was talking about, you, you need each utility to be self-sustaining. And you should, you should not pay for utility infrastructure needs and utility operations with other funds. You should pay for utility infrastructure needs with utility rates. That, that was what we were told by everybody that stepped up to the microphone, you need to do it that way, not pay for it with some other funds from somewhere else. And even people suggested it would be not responsible to pay for, with solar lease revenues. I'm not saying that's the case. I mean, but that's a debate that needs to happen, and that needs to be with data on the table and with information about, you know, if we're taking them, what, you know, exactly, how much do we have? Is that really going to make a big difference in the overall amount? Because when you're talking about 1.5 million dollars a year or something like that, maybe it does. But compared to 200 million dollars in infrastructure costs, maybe it doesn't. I mean, that's something that somebody has to do the statistical analysis on and tell us if it's, you know, what kind of dent it's going to make in there. And, you know, so the goal of all of this was to take care of our debt, take care of our infrastructure needs, get it back up to snuff. And, and it was that one day, you know, the, we could either give a rebate, or we could reduce these utility rate increases, or we could get rid of them altogether. But part of the, again, part of the reason that we got into the hole we got into is because there weren't annual increases. And what costs were in, you know, 1990 are not what costs are today. There is inflation, like it or not. The comment that was made at the end there, that, you know, instead of doing a, a flat annual amount, could you do something that fluctuates with, you know, some other CPI index that's not exactly 2.5% a year? Yes. I mean, that's something we could look at as well. But again, there's no perfect system for doing that, and it's part of the process. So I personally think that we need to allow this process to go forward, like it is going forward. Do we need to accelerate it? I hope so. I mean, that's good. But we're barely three years into these, we're not even three years into these utility rate increases. They started in the fall of 2016, and we're the spring of 2019. So we're two and a half years into these things. And we don't have all the data completely yet to make that decision, certainly not in front of us tonight. We don't have the 10- to 15-year capital plan in front of us. So in my opinion, to do anything other than defer the increases to the fall would be a knee-jerk reaction that's not warranted. It's, you know, I don't like paying utilities any more than anybody else, but I'm not going to whisper, you know, cloud nine things in people's ears, just because it's something that they want to hear. The reality is, we went through five or six workshops and public meetings back in 2015, 2016. We grappled with how to do it. We got public input for those that were willing to participate. Honestly, we didn't get a whole lot of participation. Letty Zimmerman was, came to one of our, she was the only person that came to one of the workshops. And I, I think if I recall correctly, Eric Lungard came to one of our other meetings. We didn't get a lot of participation. I would hope this time around, we get more participation and more input. But it's easy to play armchair quarterback and say, I don't like utility rate increases, because none of us do. We all agree with that, but that doesn't make for a healthy utility system. And it doesn't, it's not the way we should look at things. We need to really analyze the data, and anybody worth their salt will tell you that. You have to figure out what the true numbers are, and you have to plan into the future. And you do the best you can with the data you have at the time, and maybe you do a utility rate study every four or five years, if you can afford to do it, and if it's necessary. I think it is necessary. That's why we already queued it up before Councilmember McManus even brought this forward. And so it's easy to read history backwards, and, you know, if you weren't involved, to say, well, you know, why'd you do it that way, or why'd you do it that way? I mean, I get it, there's lots of ways you can do it. There's 100 ways that we can skin this cat, but there's no perfect way, I'll guarantee you that. And it's not true that we don't have needs. This money is already spent years in advance, because we have such huge needs, especially on our electrical infrastructure. And if you've come to any of those meetings, you know that. That's a long, long list. We can have debate over, you know, do we not want to do that project, or that project, or is that project necessary or not? But that debate has happened, and has been said by many people in the public comment. We do have the data, and it was the data we had at the time. Whether it's still good data, we won't know until we have the new rate study. And so, again, I think it would be irresponsible to kick the can further, because we've already gone through that process. And let's just go through this process again and figure out, dial in on exactly what it should be going forward, as best as we can. It won't be perfect. Five years from now, there will be other people that will criticize us for what we do this time around, because nobody has a crystal ball. You do the best you can with the data you have at the time, based on the studies you have, based on expert help. And you try to project out what the remaining useful life is of your utility infrastructure. And we create rebate programs, we try to have reserves in case of emergencies. You do all of that, we've been doing all of that. I hope that the rate studies come back and say, you know, we're good. We don't need to keep raising rates. I don't know that that's the case. And I don't know that anybody in this room can say that's the case until we really analyze it. And it's easy, again, to play armchair quarterback and pretend like we know everything, but it's, it's not the case. We don't. We really need to see the data. And so I don't know that we can vote on any deferral tonight. I have a question for a second. There's, we can't really vote on any deferral tonight, correct? Because it's not on an agenda?
You can provide it, Staff Director.
So to come back on voting. Mr. McManus?
Yes, I, I'd like to respond to some of the last several minutes here, without the use of a lot of cliches. You know, one of the statements is, well, you know, we haven't raised rates since 2009. Well, that was at, close to the bottom of a recession, when rates were raised on people. So when we make statements about, well, gee, we've tried to protect things in the past, well, no, actually, you raised rates last time at the very bottom of the recession. Excess surpluses. When we look at these funds right now, When we look at these funds right now, there is money already budgeted in there for capital projects. We are not just paying day-to-day expenses. Uh, for instance, in the water utility fund, there's a million and a half dollars in capital projects. In the wastewater fund, there's $800,000 in capital projects. In the electric fund, uh, there's 6.2, uh, excuse me, 6.389 million in capital projects. So to say that, well, we have to have this extra money because we have these projects, these projects are budgeted in and we still have surpluses. So do I understand that there's a need to accumulate surpluses? Certainly. You're, you're going to have expenses down the road. But the fact is, we're already budgeting millions of dollars every year for these projects and we're still running surpluses. We're still running above what the projections were. Um, further, capital projects, uh, we keep talking about them. I think it was brought up earlier tonight about the B C tap transformer. Uh, I believe the cost of that was 1.2 million dollars and it's still sitting there doing nothing. A, a year after its purchase, it's not been installed. It's not doing the job that it was purchased to do. It's just sitting there waiting. Okay? Uh, the 69 KV line. Uh, I've heard about that project for years now. It's necessary so that we can have a complete loop around the city's electrical system. Uh, that was voted on and then it was brought back after it was approved. Uh, letters, 600 letters were sent out to residents saying, well, what do you think about this after we had approved it? Okay? The, the mayor had, uh, a lot of folks turn up and say, well, we don't want that after we had already voted on it. That's another one of these projects that's been put off and put off. The price keeps going up on it and costing us more down the road. Um, to, to make the suggestion that what I've proposed tonight is a knee-jerk reaction or some type of armchair quarterbacking, uh, again, I, I think that goes far away from the information that I requested to have be put into the packet as well as the additional information that, uh, the utility director had placed in there. There's very solid information in there as far as what these excesses are and the reasons why we don't need this two and a half percent automatic increase. Again, automatic increases are just that. They're automatic. They're not based on anything else other than somebody saying, well, we'll just do two and a half percent. That's kind of what inflation is each year. Well, we don't see our costs go up by two and a half percent and yet we get that type of increase. Uh, the comparison, the false comparison all the time, well, we're still cheaper than Vegas. Well, we should be. That's, that's part of why we're so fortunate here in Boulder City is they built this town while they were building that big generator down there in the middle of the river. It's part of the reason why we're a fortunate city. So again, to say, well, we're still cheaper than the other places, um, that just doesn't hold water, so to speak. Um, also getting back to, you know, well, we're, we're trying to get more information. We're trying to get more input. Uh, six months ago, Councilman Haray and I worked to get a utility commission formed. Uh, it was kicked down the road saying, well, let's wait until we hire a utility director. Well, we could have been going through the process just as we are now to get that committee formed and now we're just months behind on doing that. So now they're going to spend months having to get up to speed. Time's already been lost on that. Uh, and with regard to the data, the statement was made that, you know, you have a rate study, well, the day after it's done, the data's old. That's true. It's one day old. When you have a rate study that's four years old, then it's time to look at that data and say, you know what? I wonder if that's still accurate. So we have a four-year-old rate study that says, well, at the end of all these other rate increases, just start throwing two and a half percent a year on there. And yet when we look at these budgets, we see, well, wait a minute, we keep getting these surpluses. So again, I think it's very clear, we don't have to do the two and a half percent now. We can wait for the rate study to be done. We can wait for this utility committee to get up to speed, for our utility director, our public works directors to get a better feel for the projects that are necessary. This two and a half percent is just a burden on the rate payers. It's not a surplus for the city that we need right now.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I have some comments. I have a question for the city clerk. In the agenda, this, uh, agenda item 14 has shown us three separate resolutions, 6926, 6927, 6928. However, in the agenda packet, there's no wording for these resolutions. And I would have expected to see the wording for the resolution is the same format as the prior resolution that was being repealed. Because as it is, there's no replacement. All it says is repealing, uh, the prior, like in the case of 6926, we're repealing number 6489. So, uh, I, I don't even know if we can act on anything tonight.
Councilman Haray, I, I think I might be able to help you with that. Um, this agenda item is worded for possible action on the repeal. Normally what we would do if we are going to go ahead with the repeal is we would direct the city attorney to come up with these resolutions. I, I didn't write the resolutions initially. Uh, my recommendation is to repeal the automatic increases that are in there and that would be the direction given to the city attorney is to write, uh, new resolutions that would do so. And we can't, we can do that tonight. We can give direction to the city attorney. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney? Thank you.
So in effect, uh, you're only, uh, only specifically talking about the 2.5% rate increase. There's no discussion regarding connection charges, which is the thing that I kind of always close to my heart to, to reduce in some manner.
And I would urge you to, uh, suggest a council agenda item and I will support you on that, sir.
Uh, the other question before my prior comment, I had mentioned, uh, the one possibility that could be done fairly simply is the six-month deferment that we could do right now. What effect that would have, especially if we put some stipulations in there that this would take place, uh, after the advisory committee was up and running, because I really feel we should have, that should is an input. But what the effect would be on the, uh, yearly rate, since it would only be in effect for half a year, it would mean that there was actually only a rate increase of 1.25% and, uh, instead of the 2.5 because it only run a half a year. Uh, and as a result of the, uh, the input from the, uh, citizens advisory committee and other sources, before that six-month, uh, deferment ends, we would then, uh, move to have this, uh, repealed or replaced in a, uh, in a way, I would hope that it would include connection fees. I'd like to take care of it in one swipe to, to give some comfort to the, to the folks who are paying electric bills, who have no way to conserve because the, the connection fees are regressive. There is, no matter what you use, they're still stuck with that $86 to $90 connection fee every month. So that, that really has to be addressed. I think that's even more important than the, the rate increase, especially for seniors that, uh, are struggling to survive here in town. I think it's, it's essential to incorporate that as well. But again, I would, again, revisit my idea of deferring for six months with the stipulation that, uh, they get the input from the advisory committee and also again, to have a, a workshop with the, with the, uh, city council to discuss the replacement that would take place at the end of that six months.
So I'll go ahead and turn that into a motion because I'm not in favor of, um, without data, um, repealing these resolutions. But I do agree that we should direct staff to defer the rate increases or to come back with a resolution to defer the rate increases to, I would just say, October. That's approximately six months. And I certainly don't mind directing staff to, um, come back at the appropriate time to look at the service charges. But we're going to be looking at all of the data. So, I mean, that's the main directive I would make is to defer for six months. And I'd turn that into a motion.
The, uh, rate increase, it would only be a four-month delay. It's not scheduled to go into effect until July 1. Uh, therefore, if you're going to delay it six months, it would be January 1 for the six-month delay.
I would agree.
Okay. I'm fine with that. January 1. I'll amend my motion accordingly.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any further discussion? We're on to item number 15, the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and Council, there's no, um, uh, information to share, uh, out of the ordinary on those two reports.
Okay, we're to our final public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak in final public comment? Mr. Turner?
Um, Ray Turner. Um, I just, I'm one of those people that rarely goes to any of the workshops or, uh, the workshops you guys put on and stuff. And to be quite honest with you, I don't expect to get much from them because I find that, uh, when studies are done and companies are hired consultants, they come and they deliver an outcome that, you know, that's, that you guys want, you know? It's, I don't have any faith in it. I don't trust you guys, talking about the council, um, not anyone in particular, but we don't trust you. We just don't trust you. And it's, it's such an act. It's so obvious that things are rehearsed and planned ahead of time and we come here, we want discussion. We want to see genuine community leadership and open discussion and not this, you know, it's so obvious that it's all phony and that's why I don't attend those workshops and meetings. Thank you.
Crystal Hoskins, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the water waste, uh, that the city actually does that we pay for. Um, there is extreme overwatering going on, on the lakeside during the canal area. I ride my bike nightly. I'm going through quite a bit of water every night, um, ruining shirts from the splash up from the tires. And maybe we could cut back a little bit of the grass because it's a lot of grass too.
Thank you. I will agree. I've ridden through those channels and there's a lot of water coming through there. Others?
Would it be appropriate for me to, uh, make a public service announcement?
Sure, we got, uh, one more public comment.
Judy DeShane. Um, I just was going to make a correction for the record maybe. Uh, the name of Mr. Donnelly's company is Cooper, not copper. It's two O's and one P. Copper is the opposite, one O and two Ps. I just thought I'd let everybody know.
No, dang it. Either way, Mr. Donnelly's got a lot of free advertisements tonight. Any others?
My name's Glenn Fan. Good evening again. I've got a, just a kind of a comment. There'd been put a bit, there's been a big push by the city for pushing the swimming pool project, you know, $40 million plus, you know? And I keep, everybody says that, no, the city's not pushing it. It's just education about the ballot. Well, my question is, you know, I don't know how many of the meetings they've had now. It's been six or eight or whatever, reasonable, whatever. But, you know, I haven't seen any classes, shall we say, or instructions about the other ballot questions. You know, why aren't we having an equal number of, uh, city-sponsored informational meetings about the OHV project? Just the water project. I don't think the city should be pushing any ballot one over the other. So I'm, I'm looking forward to when we're going to have the, these classes before the coming June election on all the, on all the ballot questions. Not just the water, you know, the water park. Just my thoughts. I mean, I think it's only fair that you instruct the, the public about all the ballot questions with the same amount of information and time and energy as you are on the one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others, please?
Linda Barnett. Um, when Notre Dame was burning, there was a really beautiful quote in the Times. It, it said something like, "We've failed as a civilization to be caretakers of this priceless history." It really made me think of Boulder City. So I wanted to specifically thank Ray Turner. When Ray came on the scene here, it was all about historic preservation. I had to laugh when somebody was citing Ray that he shouldn't have been on the Historic Preservation Committee because some other girl who lived in the historic district was going to be better than he was. I'd like to thank Councilman McManus, Ray, and the Boulder City History and Arts for really caring enough about that building to want to raise money to pay for that roof. And as higher power would have it, they contacted Mr. Donnelly, however it came through. I mean, uh, I just think they have made such a big difference in this town and I think everyone is waking up to historic preservation that we will not move the gardens to a different spot. Uh, I was, I, I don't know if it was you, uh, Mr. Neola, but I was amazed today that the sculpture garden was cleaned up. It looked beautiful. I'm not sure who was responsible for that, but thank you. Was it you?
It was city staff.
Yay, bravo. So I hope we'll, hope we'll. Okay, well, whoever it was, thank you. I hope it's, uh, you know, what will keep happening. It looked beautiful today. I was amazed. And, uh, I, I just, again, uh, want to thank Boulder City History and Arts, Councilman, um, Ray, and whoever really cares about this town. I think we're, we're seeing a turnaround. Uh, we did lose the hospital. Uh, I didn't live here. It wasn't a big deal to me, but it meant the world to a lot of people and we lost it for, because nothing was in place. So we're hoping that that's going to be changing and, uh, thank you for everyone who, uh, cares enough to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
Mayor, Council, Victor Miller, resident of Boulder City. And I just want to, to say, uh, we saved the, the hotel. So we've been doing, uh, saving our history for a long time and a lot of people worked very hard on that. We shouldn't forget that, that this has been an effort for a long time in Boulder City to save our history and our historical nature of our community. And, uh, so it, I'm glad it's continuing to go on, but it's nothing new. It's something that has been historic. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close our final public comment and move to city council reports. Ah, yes, public service announcement.
So I'm, I'm sorry for, sorry for not mentioning this earlier, but I just wanted to know, since there is a lot of energy around, uh, rates and utility funds, we do have the, um, volunteer, uh, forums out there on the internet. To date, we've only received six. There's obviously a lot of people who are interested in obviously how, um, those funds are structured and how we pay for the, you know, all of our expenses and how the budgets are arranged. So I guess I'm making a, a public service announcement to feel free and apply, um, because we do need more than, obviously, we need a minimum of seven. Right now we have six. I intend. at least for now, to leave it open for a minimum of another couple of weeks, but it would be appreciated if we could get more folks to apply.
Thank you. Okay, council reports. Mr. Haray, do you have anything?
Now, I'd just like to do a second, Mr. Schuman, request for volunteers. I would like to get our citizens utility commission up and running as soon as we can, but we'd like to have the best possible folks with the best possible skills to sit on that to advise the council. So again, I encourage anyone that feels that they can have significant input into our decision-making for mutual utility issues, to contact the city clerk, I think it's online as well, to get a volunteer form, throw it in and pass have it in. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Mr. Mayor, in collaboration with the LVCBA and the Chamber of Commerce, we hosted the Second Annual Boulder City Showcase at Cascada last Friday. It was a great venue for, excuse me, for this event and it really showcased Cascada as well because as you all know, it's not a private golf course anymore. So it does host, it hosts public events. So I, I hope they got some business out of the showcase. We had more Boulder City vendors than we did last year. We had 20 vendors and probably 40 to 50 participants, meaning tour groups, smaller tour groups and meeting and party planners. It was very successful. We had, a lot of connections were made, not only between the vendors and the participants, between vendor and vendor. So I think it was very successful. Also, this Friday is Historic Home Tour. I think it's the first time we've ever done this in Boulder City. I just asked Alan before the meeting, I think there still may be tickets available and you can go on the nevadapreservation.org website to get tickets. And that, this Historic Home Tour was a, as a result of holding the showcase last year. Jill asked me to announce Spring Jam is coming up the first weekend in May. They have many more attractions and events than they did last year. It'll be very exciting. So I hope everyone gets out and supports that event. And also the same day, it's a very busy day at Veterans Cemetery at 10 o'clock. They have the disposal of unserviceable flag ceremony. I've, I've attended that a couple of times and it's a very moving ceremony. And basically what they do is they take all the flags that have been taken out of service because they're in disrepair and they have a ceremony around that. And the proper disposal of flags, of course, is to burn them. So people who come and participate, they, they show such reverence for the flag and the proper protocol for not just folding the flag, but like I said, for disposing of them. And then people can take a flag and then go outdoors. They have a fire pit and throw the, the flags in the fire pit. And then last year, they had a helicopter fly over at the end of that ceremony. But it's at 10 o'clock on, on the same day as Spring Jam, which I think is May 4. So anyway, I just wanted to announce it because for anyone who is interested in veterans affairs, it's a, it's a really special ceremony to participate in. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
A couple of things. One, my apologies for being late earlier for the RDA meeting. I was at a Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition Board meeting that ran a little long. It looks like that entity may finally make some progress on some things. Second item, I was at the Pool Pact Annual Conference last week up in Reno. That is our insurance provider. They also provide support services for our human resources. It is an organization that many other small towns and the smaller rural county's belong to. It does a great service for us. I think our staff can attest to some of the benefits we get from that. And it also provides us insurance protection that we would probably find very expensive elsewhere. Unfortunately, they are going to up our rates a little bit this year. So you know, we, we can't always be perfect, but from what I see of that organization, they do Boulder City a great service. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your service on those committees. Mr. Schuman? All right. Well, thank you for being here tonight, everybody. We'll see you next time. Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, Lawrence.
Good night.